Yes, you can start. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I now call this meeting the Standing Committee on Government Operations to Order. My name is Ryland Johnson. I am the Chair of this committee in MLA for Yellowknife North. The Standing Committee on Government Operations is made up of regular members from several different constituencies throughout the Northwest Territories. Due to COVID outbreaks, committee will continue to host virtual meetings until such time it is safe to meet face to face again. We are presently committed to identifying the systemic barriers preventing the representation of Indigenous people in the public service from increasing. Committee has been reviewing the GNWT's human resources practices and policies, and this remains a priority for the 19th Assembly. This committee is always open to any public feedback on Indigenous recruitment and retention. Today's meeting is on the Indigenous Retention and Recruitment Framework and Action Plan developed by the Department of Finance. This meeting is being broadcast live on the various Legislative Assembly, Facebook, YouTube, and NTAssembly.ca pages. If you would like to provide your point of view or have any comments on anything you hear today, please do so by writing a letter and emailing it to the committee clerk. This information can be found on our website, NTAssembly.ca. Before we start, I would like to remind members and witnesses that all comments, questions, and remarks need to be directed through myself and Chair. Please wait to be recognized before we are speaking. I will now ask members to introduce themselves and any opening remarks they may have, starting with Deputy Chair, MLA Marcelos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I welcome everybody that's taking part in this meeting today. My name is Frida Marcelos, and I'm the MLA for Tobacha. This Indigenous Recruitment and Retention Framework and the Action Plan is a crucial piece of policy that we're looking at. And it's time for change from the way we did things with our Indigenous partners and our Indigenous people of the North. So I'm very interested in this policy, and I'm sure that everyone in the Northwest Territories is also interested. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, MLA Marcelos. I'll turn it over to Emily Allright.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to sit in on the committee meeting. I look forward to what the Minister has to say and the questions and answers that will follow. Thanks.
Emily Jacobson, I believe you are joining us by telephone?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. Jackie Jacobson, MLA for Nenacoot.
Thank you, Emily Jacobson. And you're Emily Semler. Can I just confirm that your mic is working as well? Just for the public purposes, I can see Emily Semler's screen, but she looks like she has stepped out. We are also joined by Emily Semler and Emily Cleveland today. But without further ado, I will turn it over to the Honorable Caroline Woznick, Minister of Finance, to introduce her witnesses and begin the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everyone, and members of Standing Committee. So Caroline Woznick, Minister of Finance, Minister of Indigenous Tourism and Investment, and Minister responsible for the Status of Women. Very pleased to be able to appear before you today to discuss the Indigenous Recruitment and Retention Framework and Action Plan. So joining me today are Bill McKay, Deputy Minister of the Department of Finance, and Krista Korniger-Ski, the Manager of the Department of Finance's Diversity and Inclusion Unit. The Indigenous Recruitment and Retention Framework, or IRRF, is designed to help the government of the Northwest Territories improve Indigenous representation among its public servants with the goal of a public service that is representative of the population that it serves. The framework empowers departments to recognize the importance of Indigenous perspectives within their policies, programs, and services by encompassing and supporting existing Indigenous recruitment and retention programs, addressing recruitment and employment barriers for Indigenous residents, applicants, and employees, and providing the tools to develop detailed implementation plans that will support departments as they incorporate those Indigenous perspectives into their teams at all levels, resulting in a workforce that is representative of the population that we serve. This framework is supported by an action plan that details how each department and agency will work together and share the responsibility to reach the goals and action items that will improve Indigenous people's success within the recruitment process and within the public service. Each department and agency will be required to create its own Indigenous employment plan. To achieve their specific objectives, set attainable benchmarks for success, address barriers to employment, retention, and advancement of Indigenous people. The Indigenous Recruitment and Retention Framework and Action Plan supports the continual improvement of our recruitment and retention practices and will provide opportunities to measure our progress as we move towards greater Indigenous representation in the public service. I will now turn to Krista for a brief presentation, and following that, be very happy to answer any questions that members of Standing Committee might have regarding the Indigenous Recruitment and Retention Framework and Action Plan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Minister Woznick. Go ahead, Krista Korniger-Ski, with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and our Minister for allowing me to present on the work that we're doing in this forum. Today, we'll take a look at the background that we've done, the engagement, look at the framework, we'll take a look at the action plan, the labor force statistical analysis, Indigenous employment plans, and then an opportunity for questions. A bit of a background on how we started this work and where it began. Started with the HR and GNWT vision, which is the GNWT is committed to a competent public service that is inclusive and representative of the population that it serves. This work started in 1989 when the affirmative action policy was established, which provides priority hiring to candidates belonging to eligible designated groups that are underrepresented within the public service. In 2009, the GNWT recognized the need to increase Indigenous recruitment and retention and created the Indigenous Employee Advisory Committee. In 2014, the Regional Recruitment Program was developed. In 2018, the Indigenous Career Gateway Program and the Indigenous Management and Development Training Program was created. And in 2019, the GNWT provided a response to the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls Inquiry to address basic social and economic needs. The Indigenous Recruitment and Retention Framework will encompass existing programs designed to recruit and retain Indigenous employees in addition to integrating goals into business practices, programs, and services throughout the GNWT. Developing the framework followed a strategic planning process, including determining the appropriate vision that provides attainable long-term direction for Indigenous recruitment and retention within the public service, goals and objectives to support the overall vision, as well as the implementation plan that will identify activities and performance measures for evaluation purposes. A jurisdictional scan was conducted to identify best practices in the areas of recruitment and retention of Indigenous employees, including a review of several frameworks from different provincial and federal governments. Most provincial governments reviewed in the jurisdictional scan relied on internal stakeholder engagement, including conducting employee engagement surveys and interviews, developing interdepartmental working groups, and consulting with Indigenous governments. For the purpose of developing the framework and action plan, we engaged with our two advisory committees, which include the Indigenous Employee Advisory Committee and the GNWT Advisory Committee on Diversity and Inclusion. We engaged with our internal stakeholders, which included Indigenous governments. Invitations were sent to all Indigenous governments and organizations, and we were able to engage with the Achrodeine First Nation, the Neetad Kitchin Council, the Kitchin Tribal Council, the Satu Secretariat Incorporated, and the Tletcheo Government. Other Indigenous governments indicated they will provide us with feedback at a later date as they did not have the capacity to provide a response during the longer time. Internal stakeholders included our departments within the Human Resources Branch under the Department of Finance. That included the Diversey Inclusion Unit, the Job Evaluation, Management, and Recruitment Services, and the Employee Development and Workplace Planning Department. The Indigenous Recruitment and Retention Framework has allowed us to look within our policies and programs and services to seek external feedback from our Indigenous partnerships on the barriers to recruitment, retention, and advancement of Indigenous employees. It allowed us to determine which program and services are meeting our goals and where there are opportunities for innovation and flexibility in our development of new programs to ensure meaningful changes are made within the public service. The main goals of the framework are to increase Indigenous representation, to ensure the GNWT recognizes and incorporates Indigenous perspectives into policies, programs, and services, and to support Indigenous leadership opportunities, to ensure Indigenous representation in the public service is achieved at all levels of government and across all departments and agencies, and where Indigenous employees have access and are part of decision-making processes that impact the public service and the population of the NWT. The Indigenous Recruitment and Retention Action Plan will support the framework's two main goals: to increase Indigenous representation and to support Indigenous leadership opportunities. To reach these goals, the action plan sets out objectives and deliverables to improve Indigenous employees' success within the recruitment process and within the public service as a whole. Each department and agency must work together and share the responsibilities of these objectives and deliverables through the development of unique Indigenous employment plans that will guide the way to reaching the framework and the action plan's vision and goals. We will review the Indigenous employment plans that departments will complete a little bit later in this presentation. First, we will review the action items that will help to form and support Indigenous employment plans each department will complete. The first goal within the action plan is to increase Indigenous representation. Through Indigenous representation, the GNWT can recognize and incorporate Indigenous perspectives into policies, programs, and services to better serve the public. To achieve this goal, we have outlined five action items. Each action item also includes at least three deliverables. Action Item 1.1 is to conduct a detailed review of all GNWT job descriptions. This action item allows us to develop guidelines to assist departments in determining the education and experience required for positions. Allows us to develop resources for departments to associate Indigenous cultural and social factors with job descriptions, complete a detailed review of all job descriptions targeting systemic barriers. The review of job descriptions will be completed by individual departments. As the experts on the skills and education that are required to complete the positions, the applicants that they are looking to recruit or advance, departments will have the flexibility to adjust job descriptions to address barriers to employment that are specific to their department. An example is that recruiting for positions in health poses different challenges than recruiting in human resources. Action Item 1.2 is to review recruitment and retention practices to address barriers. Work under this action item will include reviewing staffing processes to ensure they are culturally appropriate and culturally sensitive, and that action is taken to remove barriers to the appointment and promotion of Indigenous people, including a review of best practices in other jurisdictions, the ability to develop a staff review framework to ensure the competition processes are being carried out in accordance with the affirmative action policy and hiring processes, development of a process for applicants to request Indigenous representation on hiring committees, and the development of mandatory training for hiring managers on the staffing process, recruitment programs, and understanding systemic and unconscious racism and bias within the hiring process. Action Item 1.3 is to enhance employment opportunities for Indigenous candidates. The Department of Finance will establish eligibility lists for pre-qualified candidates to be reviewed prior to initiating a job competition. The list will include Indigenous candidates for all positions. This will allow managers to find skilled Indigenous employees from all departments and help employees move, receive cross-training, and advance within another department, develop a networking strategy with secondary and post-secondary institutions and Indigenous governments to target Indigenous students, and partnering with education, culture, and employment to identify Northern Indigenous post-secondary students to target for employment opportunities. Action Item 1.4 is to improve access and awareness of staffing process, resources, and information for applicants, creating resources and tools to improve applicants' experience when applying for positions, development of a communication strategy to ensure applicants are aware of the hiring process resources that are available, the development of a community outreach plan to engage directly with Northerners, and increase awareness and understanding of services and career opportunities with the GNWT through partnerships with Indigenous governments, government service offices, and virtual monthly information sessions. Action Item 1.5 is to develop departmental Indigenous employment plans and targets. Departments and agencies will develop an Indigenous employment plan to increase, develop, and maintain the number of Indigenous employees employed at the GNWT. These plans will include short, medium, and long-term goals, along with department-specific actions to increase, develop, and maintain the number of Indigenous employees employed at the GNWT. Departments will establish yearly targets, which will be included in annual business plans, and the achievement of Indigenous employment plans and targets will be tied to deputy head and senior management performance appraisals. The second goal within the action plan is to increase Indigenous leadership. Indigenous leadership is important to the GNWT to ensure that Indigenous perspectives are included when developing policies and programs and when designing and providing services. In addition, to attain a public service that is representative of the public that we serve, it is imperative to support Indigenous employees to gain leadership roles within the GNWT. This will add value to the work that we do and set a positive example for Indigenous employees with aspirations for leadership. To achieve this goal, we have outlined six action items we will undertake, which also include specific deliverables that will support each action item. Action Item 2.1 is to offer Indigenous cultural awareness and sensitivity training to support the government's commitment to building and maintaining a workforce that embraces diversity through cultural awareness and inclusion. Departments and agencies will ensure that all employees complete Living Well Together, which is the redeveloped Indigenous cultural awareness and sensitivity training developed by the GNWT. Action Item 2.2 is to develop an Indigenous language professional development program. The deliverables that support this action item include the Department of Finance will collaborate with ECNE to support the delivery of professional development programs in Indigenous languages. The celebration and recognition of GNWT employees who use Indigenous languages at work through the bilingual designation employer recognition campaign. Action Item 2.3 is to empower GNWT employees to question social norms and discover tools to help them reshape how they see the world and their interactions with each other. Departments and agencies will ensure all employees complete the Equitable Workplace Cultivating Attitudes of Anti-Racism and Allyship Training. The Department of Finance will develop and offer unconscious bias training for all employees. And the Department of Finance will implement annual performance expectations for leaders that hold them accountable to address unconscious bias, racism, discrimination, and harassment in their departments. Action Item 2.4 is to increase internal support to Indigenous employees to increase retention. The Department of Finance will develop Indigenous-focused employee supports and will assist departments and agencies to provide additional cultural health and wellness resources, such as wellness workshops, staff retreats, the use of traditional medicines, cultural ceremonies, and sharing circles. The Department of Finance will collaborate with the Indigenous Employee Advisory Committee to review current onboarding leadership programs, supervisory and management courses to ensure they incorporate Indigenous perspectives and culture, and to review all organizational hiring initiatives and programs. The Department of Finance will develop and deliver cultural competency training for all employees and will implement an exit interview process that includes questions about employees' experience with bias, racism, discrimination, harassment, and cultural insensitivity. Action Item 2.5 is to improve development and training options and opportunities for Indigenous employees for advancement. The Department of Finance will ensure departments and employees are aware of and utilize the Indigenous Management Development Training Program and that it is fully subscribed every year. The Department of Finance will develop an Indigenous mentorship program for informal on-the-job training and make mentorship and on-the-job training part of senior employees' job descriptions, responsibilities, and the general work objectives for each unit, division, and department. The Department of Finance will create resources for employees to identify career pathways and training needs in their learning and development plans as part of the performance development process. The Department of Finance will produce a succession planning guide and toolkit that has a focus on Indigenous employee development and will conduct a review of the Leadership Development Program, ensuring Indigenous perspectives are incorporated. Action Item 2.6 is to build capacity and career development. The Department of Finance will ensure the Indigenous Career Gateway Program is fully subscribed every year, that departments support the building capacities in Indigenous governments program, and that that program is also fully subscribed every year. The Department of Finance will develop an equitable access to training directive to address unequal access to training opportunities for Indigenous employees and will identify and promote the use of transfer assignments and cross-training to encourage mobility and the development of Indigenous employees. Departments will use these action items in addition to GNWT programs to set targets to increase Indigenous representation and within leadership. The targets set by departments need to be meaningful, attainable, measurable. As such, we needed to ensure each department had the information they needed when developing those plans, and we will look at that information next. The Department of Finance conducted a labor force statistical analysis, which will be used to guide departments and agencies as they prepare their Indigenous employment plans. The analysis will help departments and agencies to identify gaps in the Indigenous representation and to better understand the existing NWT labor force so that they identify areas where they can support Indigenous persons finding employment within their department or agency. The analysis compared the NWT labor force to the GNWT workforce based on demographic information, occupation, and education levels. The analysis compares the NWT Indigenous labor force of 41.6%, which represents the Indigenous population in the NWT who are employed or who are looking for employment between the ages of 18 to 64, to the existing GNWT vacancies. This will be an important part of the discussion as we identify gaps between the NWT Indigenous population and the GNWT workforce. A summary of this analysis can be found beginning on page 12 of the action plan, but two key findings on the NWT and the GNWT demographics include the largest segment of the Indigenous labor force in the NWT, who's also the youngest, with the Indigenous persons aged 18 to 29 accounting for 29% of the Indigenous labor force. And in the North Slave Region, where 53% of GNWT employees are located, Indigenous persons make up 22% of the population. Indigenous persons account for between 53 and 92% of the population in each of the other five regions. 21% are Indigenous women, and 9% men. This information can provide departments with insight into the applicants they will receive and how that can change based on the regions they are attempting to recruit in. For example, it is likely that the majority of Indigenous persons applying for positions with the GNWT will likely be between the ages of 18 to 29, and that the regions will likely have a higher range of Indigenous applicants who apply on available positions. Comparing the NWT labor force to the current statistics within our department's upcoming vacancies and the trends within other departments will assist departments in setting short, medium, and long-term targets that are attainable. The Department of Finance has committed to having a template for Indigenous employment plans and instructions on how to set targets available to departments this month. The template will include a section where departments will list the action items that correspond to the barriers identified for their department and the expected outcomes when those action items are addressed. Departments will also have a table that lists the employment categories for their department, and they will be provided with the stats for Indigenous employees currently filling those positions. Departments can then look forward and determine targets to increase those numbers in the short, medium, and long term. Targets are set first by reviewing the employment categories for their department and the number of Indigenous employees currently within those positions. Departments will then review upcoming vacancies or opportunities for mentorship and determine what barriers need to be addressed in order to increase Indigenous employment or advancement within those categories. The analysis will determine the target that is set in the short, medium, and long term. This analysis is specific to the department, the barriers they face, and the number of positions and vacancies within each department. And it will appear that some departments are able to set more ambitious targets than others. In our research for this work, we know that some departments have historically had higher numbers of Indigenous employees within their departments for a variety of reasons, which correspond to the positions available in communities, the courses available through college, etc. Having department-specific Indigenous employment plans provides us with the opportunity to have a deeper review of why this might be the case and provides flexibility for departments to address barriers that may be causing the disparity in targets between our departments to ensure we increase Indigenous employment within all of our departments. Departments will set targets on the short-term goals, so within three years, medium term, within five years, and long-term goals within 10 years. These targets are in addition to the yearly targets that are set within our business plans. Once complete, each departmental Indigenous employment plan will be publicly available, and departments will continue to include annual targets within their business plans. We aim to have them available to the public by March 31, 2022. The Department of Finance will be concluding a logic model, a performance measurement plan, and an evaluation framework to support the framework and action plan. Monitoring and evaluation documents are a tool that can be used to measure the success of the programs intended to improve the recruitment and retention of Indigenous employees, understand how we can make improvements every year, and to ensure the departments are receiving the support that they need to develop meaningful, attainable Indigenous employment plans. The information will be available when the logic model and the performance measurement plan is developed to support the action items. The reason this work has not yet started is because the flexibility provided within the Indigenous employment plans allows departments to address or adjust their response to barriers that are unique to their departments. They will use the action items or our existing programs to address identified barriers while completing their Indigenous employment plans. Once all of the departments and agencies have completed Indigenous employment plans, the Department of Finance will review the short, medium, and long-term goals set by all departments and agencies to ensure all the goals are attainable and will be completed within a specific timeframe. Waiting until we receive this information will ensure each action item is addressed, and we can reach out to the applicable and we can reach out to the applicable department or work collaboratively with several departments to ensure an action item is addressed. If it appears that a department has indicated they plan to address they have not, that that has not been addressed by a specific department. In addition, once the logic model and the performance measurement plan are complete, that will provide us with a clearer picture of the action items that will be completed within the short, medium, and long term, and we'll be able to provide reports that correspond with those targets. That is my presentation, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Koenigersky, for your presentation. Firstly, if you could share your speaking notes with committee, that would be very much appreciated. I know our advisors were quickly taking notes on a number of things there. But I will turn it over to committee members for any questions at this time. Just let me know.
I have a question.
Thank you. Go ahead, Emily Semler.
Yep, thank you for your presentation. So in going back to targets, one of my concerns is that we've had an affirmative action policy. We've put things in place over the last, probably the life of my entire life of this government. And the latest, like the last statistics that we have is that we're like from 2013, we're actually doing worse than we are back then. So of hiring Indigenous employees in the government in Northwest Territories. So can just clarify how targets are going to be set by each department? And what is the timeframe for reaching the representation targets? And will these each department post these updates publicly so that they're transparent? So we can know that things are changing? Thank you.
Thank you, Emily Semler. Minister Wozniak.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thanks, Emily Semler. So I'll turn it to Krista in just a moment, since she would obviously be watching. So obviously, she's in charge of managing and assisting each department to set their targets. But just quickly, with respect to how they are set, it is set by each department. And this, you know, in Emily Semler's sort of preamble, she points out that there's, you know, all the things that have been done aren't working, numbers are getting worse, but this is new. There haven't been targets before. There certainly haven't been public targets or enforceable targets, and those targets certainly haven't been tied to the evaluation of the performance of the senior management team. So the fact that senior managers who, you know, this is consensus government. We talk, we talk to the departments too, right? So it's not, it's not that the Department of Finance says thou shalt do this. It's that as a government, we're saying we're prepared to all stand up and do this. So having said that, let me turn it to Krista, if I may please, and she can speak a little bit more to how each department went about setting those targets, the timeframes, and where we can find them publicly. Thanks.
Go ahead, Ms. Koenigersky.
Thank you. The one question, if they would be publicly posted, and they will be. Every department will be required to set targets in the short term, so within three years, five, medium-term, within five years, and the 10 years. So in addition to setting yearly targets, the action items that we have, I think will go a long way in improving the numbers for each department by targeting systemic barriers within our recruitment and hiring processes, reviewing job descriptions. All of the action items will also help departments in ensuring that the targets that they set are attainable.
Thank you, Ms. Koenigersky. Any follow-up, Emily Semler?
Yeah, the other, this other stat is that like within the GNWT, within senior management, Indigenous only make up 18%. So what is this framework doing with succession planning on promoting or working or interning or mentoring Indigenous local representation to be brought into the senior management position so that we can increase this area? Thank you.
Thank you. Minister Wozniak.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Emily Semler. I mean, I mean, these two questions really are honing in on the two goals of the framework, right? We've got Indigenous representation firstly as our second, our first goal, and then, of course, second goal being specifically this question around Indigenous leadership. So all of what Emily Semler mentioned is reflected in some of those goals under, or some of the specific actions under goal two. So I'll turn that then to Krista to detail that quickly, please. Thanks.
Ms. Koenigersky.
Thank you. Yes, departments will receive a template that will outline each category for the positions in their departments. So they'll be required to set targets in each category. So I don't have the numbers, but some that require no university, university for college. So they'll set targets for each of those categories. The positions that require university are usually the ones in the management and senior management positions. So they'll also be looking at that and setting targets or using our programs on how they can mentor our succession plan with employees to get them to that next category of planets.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from committee members?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Emily. Marcellus.
I guess my question is around, once we've hired the Indigenous employees, how are we going to educate and show the managers the culture that these Indigenous employees are coming from? And, and understanding of the employee that is coming on strength is to be admired because I find that right now I'm dealing with different groups of people in the, in the government workforce in Fort Smith. And they seem to be targeted, targeting Indigenous employees in their workplace. And these are not management positions. So I wonder how you're going to deal with that because there seems to be resentment as soon as an Indigenous employee is hired over a P3 or a P4 as we identify them in today's government policy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Emily Marcellus. Minister Wozniak.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Emily Marcellus sort of hits on something that I have had some discussions with the department on, and it really is, there are elements within the action plan that speak to what we can do better to better, you know, engage and introduce Indigenous culture into the GNWT as an employer. And, you know, that some of the actions, and again, I think specifically, the specific details I think are always good to get from Krista because she's most directly involved. But there are, I know, actions that speak to what we can do to sort of, for example, having additional cultural supports for employees and wellness and health supports for employees that are focused and rooted in Indigenous cultures. But there's also a question of not just onboarding those new employees and bringing them in to, you know, the practice of the public service, but in some ways, it's almost onboarding the public service and making sure that workplaces themselves are places that are welcoming and understanding of different ways of living and being. So having said that, that is certainly part of the broad conversation of how to make this action plan and framework a living and live thing. Let me though, with specifics, on how we can better ensure that people's cultures are reflected and respected. Let me again turn that over to Krista, please.
Go ahead, Ms. Koenigersky.
Thank you, and that's a great question. Ms. Marcellus, that's something that we heard in our engagement from Indigenous governments that we need to provide a safe and inclusive workforce for Indigenous employees. That's part of the reason that the Indigenous cultural awareness training is mandatory for all training, the anti-racism training is mandatory for employees, and that we will be developing unconscious bias training as well to address exactly what you're, what you're saying. So our Indigenous employees feel safe, and our non-Indigenous employees understand why it's important to know this information.
Thank you. Any follow-up, Emily Marcellus?
Well, I have another question. I want to know how in this policy that equivalencies will be rated because a lot of times you have someone that's been in the department for a number of years, and then they end up training the manager when the new manager comes on instead of them getting the job. How is that going to be addressed in this new policy? Because I've seen that happen many times in, in government. I've always been in the, in the business sector, and these last couple of years is kind of an awakening for me that there's all these people that never seem to get ahead because of the culture of the government of the Northwest Territories policy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Minister Wozniak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Emily Marcellus. So with respect to equivalencies, I mean, there was a few different parts there. I'll try to just catch on them. The equivalencies are certainly part of the action plan in that looking for opportunities to better value them. And I'll give a specific example with respect to Indigenous languages, where obviously, if somebody speaks their language fluently, that's, that's, you know, that's the critical measure and not necessarily if they have a degree in linguistics. And we do need to do a better job of figuring out how to evaluate that someone has the skills to deliver programs in an Indigenous language, as one example. And but also a bigger picture one is that with respect to, you know, and it's really at the very top of the entire action plan is a review of the job descriptions. Because if the job description does a better job of reflecting what the job actually needs to do, then, then the issue of equivalencies may not be as, as critical because the job description itself already speaks to what the core of the job skills are, and you can better include different, different potential qualifications rather than a narrow job description that's going to require very specific job requirements, and that might be more difficult. And not difficult necessarily, but just have a narrower, narrower range of people that'd be applying. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Minister Wozniak. Any follow-up, Emily Marcellus?
I really appreciate the, the presentation that was made by Krista. There was a lot of aspects that were covered in there, and I guess time will tell. Time will tell if this, if this policy is going to actually help the P1s and P2s get into management. You know, we can't only think about, I know this is Indigenous policy, but P1, P2 Indigenous means for me too, also the, all the non-Indigenous people that were born in the Northwest Territories. You know, there's a lot, there's a lot of people that came here, and their parents never left, and now they're coming and, you know, and management positions are extremely important for, in this, in this whole policy. And I want to know how, how we're going to address that. You talked about mentoring and all this stuff, and it sounds good, but, you know, time will tell. And I'd like to see, when do you expect, this will be finalized before we're done this, this term, I think. But I'd like to see how we're, how many, how much percent do you expect each year of each of different Indigenous people that would take management positions? Have you got a kind of a future look at the percentages? I guess that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily Marcellus. Minister Wozniak.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, that does speak back to some of the targets that we have and the timeframes for the achieving, achievement of the different targets. So I'll turn that to Krista. But before I do, I want to pick up very quickly, Mr. Chair, and I am conscious of time, but Emily Marcellus is saying, you know, this is about P1s or it could be about P2s. It's, you know, I, I see this as being about the public service. If, if we achieve the goal, the fundamental goal of being inclusive and culturally respectful and representative of the public we're serving, we're a better public service for everyone. It's a better place to work. I mean, I really think if we can achieve these goals, it achieves so much goodness for, for everyone. But for the specific answer, if I could, I'll turn it again to Krista, please. Thanks.
Ms. Koenigersky.
Hi, and thanks for that, Frida. But we don't have the information yet on where we are baseline for every department. Like I mentioned in the presentation, some departments are historically just have higher Indigenous employees employed with their departments. But once every department submits their Indigenous employment plan, that'll give us a clearer picture of where every department is at and how we can support individual departments to increase their numbers if they, if they need that.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from committee members?
Mr. Chair, this is Caitlin. I have a question.
Go ahead, Emily Cleveland.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much to the Minister and Ms. Koenigersky for the presentation here today. I'm, I wanted to speak about progression within the GNWT for Indigenous employees or really any employees, but specifically Indigenous employees, who want management experience and want the opportunity to move up like Emily Marcellus talked about, within divisions that they've served for a number of years. There is some concern that some of the opportunities for advancement or for additional training required for management positions is hand-selected by people currently in supervisory roles and may inadvertently leave out people who are interested in it. And so I'm wondering if, as part of this work, especially in terms of retention, if there is talk of having a way for people to self-identify for management experience and also management training from within the GNWT to be able to kind of put their hand up and say, this is an opportunity that I really want to be able to take advantage of and want the opportunity to serve the GNWT from a management and supervisory perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily Cleveland. Minister Wozniak.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I mean, the short answer is there definitely is. There's obviously, there's, and I was just flipping madly through my sheets because there was a particular section I wanted to draw, draw your attention to. So again, I'll give Krista to chime in as well. But what I want to say is firstly, there's succession plans that are being developed. That, that seems maybe a bit obvious to folks, but there, there aren't necessarily succession plans formally in place. And that's where you get that sense of some departments, some managers may be more aware of their, of their staff and that there's succession plans than others. And this is an opportunity to, to put that in place. And again, that, that benefits absolutely everybody to have that awareness. And there's also, of course, then the training plans that are going to be expected under that, that goal about Indigenous leadership. So it's not just ad hoc, it's not hoping that this will happen just because we're saying it. You need to, to plan for it, to have training plans in place so that those employees who, who have that potential are able to find their way along. And, ah, I found what I was going to look for, actually. So it's the eligibility lists for pre-qualified candidates. This is under Action 1.3. So that there's that pool that's there of the candidates, of Indigenous candidates who do want to, to advance, to find training, to find new opportunities that, and to connect those managers who are looking for, you know, who have a position open, who know that they, that there's folks in the public service that they just need to find them. And so I think that's actually a really exciting tool that's going to help individual departments, but also help train employees to, to move around and understand the public service more fully. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Minister, Emily Cleveland.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I guess, and, and further to this, just a couple of comments before I kind of lose my cue here. One of them is in regards to what Emily Semler said before as far as reporting. This is something I would love to see included as an annual report section added to the Public Service Annual Report so that the reporting structures coming out of HR aren't kind of piecemeal here and there if we can consolidate this in with that. And then there's kind of a, an overall picture of the demographic and what's happening within the GNWT. I think that would be, that would be great. The other one, I think this is a great place for kind of that plug that I know that the Minister and I have had conversations about before on the floor of the House and personally as well as far as a consolidated education fund. So that if there is a goal that an employee has that doesn't align with their particular department or division, but it does align with the overall goals of the GNWT, that there is a mechanism for them to be able to pursue that career, career goal, and then also the overall priorities of the GNWT, I, I think is huge, especially for P1 candidates, making that accessible. But my question that I want to ask here is more in line with the appeals process that currently exists within the hiring process. The appeals process, as it stands today, is not very transparent. You get kind of a phone, a phone call that says, you know, you are not the successful applicant. Do you want to appeal? You have appeal rights. But you don't know what you're actually appealing or if the person who receives the job is by chance a P3 or a P2, if you are a P1 candidate. And so I'm wondering if also within this and within the And so I'm wondering if also within this and within the, the kind of revamp of the hiring process, if there is intent to, uh, make that appeal process more transparent for the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily Cleveland. Minister Woznick?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, there, there is an appeals process generally, of course, as, as Emily is saying, it's not, that's not part of what's in the Indigenous Recruitment Retention Framework, but, uh, Deputy Minister can speak to this. So if I could send it to Bill, please.
Go ahead, Deputy Minister.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Emily Cleveland for the question. So I, I'll address the appeals question and then I'll turn it over to Krista for the rest. But the, the appeals, we, this, this process isn't expected to affect the appeals process. The appeals process right now is, uh, set up under the Public Service Act and the appeals of your, uh, of the outcome of hiring decisions by the GNWT are brought to independent staffing review officers and those are people that are appointed for a three-year term. Uh, they're independent of the GNWT, so the process is transparent and, uh, fair and independent of the government's hiring process. So they basically review the hiring process and do an audit of that hiring process to ensure that we complied with our own policies with respect to, uh, to hiring. Um, MLA Cleveland, so we're confident in the appeals process and that it's fair. Um, and, uh, just on the other question that MLA Cleveland asked about the information we give to unsuccessful applicants, uh, about whether, what the status was of the successful candidate, we did, used to do that, but we've stopped doing that because of privacy concerns that were raised, uh, from within the GNWT, specifically the privacy officer. So that's why we stopped putting in the status of the successful candidate in letters that went out to unsuccessful applicants. So that's those two questions. And then I'm going to turn to Krista for the other, uh, issue that was raised by Emily.
Yeah, and I think another, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, actually, item 1.4 is, uh, to improve access and awareness for staffing processes and the resources available for applicants. So I think this is an opportunity where, where, where we can do better, um, staffing appeals and address that within that action item. That wasn't, um, something we heard, um, in our engagement, but it's something I've heard twice since I've given presentations, so that'll be included, um, within that action item. So thanks for that.
Thank you very much. Uh, are there any other further questions from committee members?
Mr. Chair?
Emily O'Reilly?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I want to speak to the appeals process. This was something that, um, Standing Committee on Government Operations looked at in the last assembly, uh, made, uh, I think some recommendations around this and there were some correspondence, uh, around this. The grounds for appeal are so, uh, technical and so narrow, it's virtually impossible for anybody to actually successfully appeal anything. Uh, and, and even to get a, an appeal filed and recognized as a legitimate appeal, the grounds are so narrow, it's, uh, quite frankly ridiculous. Um, so I, I do hope that, um, this is going to be something that's going to be examined, uh, in the context of, uh, uh, this, this, uh, effort as well. Um, but yeah, I, I would really urge the Minister to review the correspondence from SGO in the last assembly on this point. The appeals process we have in place, um, because it's so narrow, uh, yeah, within the very tiny confines of it, it may be, appear to be transparent and fair, but the ability to actually file an appeal is so narrow to begin with that it's totally meaningless. So, uh, yeah, I really urge the Minister to look at this and I would hope that my colleagues on SGO would take this up again as well because there's a lot of frustration out there, the inability for people to even access any kind of appeal process in the first place. Um, but I, I would like to, uh, address the issue of the public reporting that, uh, Ms. Cleveland, uh, raised. Um, yeah, if there are, if departments are going to be setting their own individual targets, uh, there needs to be, um, some way of, uh, publicly reporting the progress on those individual departmental targets. And the public service annual report is probably the, the best place to do it. Uh, maybe it needs to be its own section in the report, uh, but I think it really is important to have some, uh, public reporting of the progress around the individual departmental targets. Uh, some of the, the targets are not terribly ambitious, it's probably a polite way of saying it and, uh, but there has to be some accountability there. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Emily O'Reilly. Minister Woznick?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so again, I mean, the, the appeals process, as Krista already said, wasn't, um, something that came back initially when we were doing all the, the much engagement that went into the development of the IRRF. Uh, but as she said, she certainly has heard some comments about it since. Um, so, you know, uh, there, yeah, we're always open to, to hearing that feedback and she's already indicated she'll be including that under one of the action items that lends itself to that. So, and yeah, and as for public reporting, you know, again, similarly, I, I know I've said this in other contexts, if there's a goal or there is a target or there's a measurable, then, then yeah, then, then it is what it is and we should report on it. And if we don't achieve it, then, um, you know, I'd rather put that out there and talk about the reasons why we haven't achieved a goal than just pretend that that's not happening. So, um, yeah, again, happy to, to confirm that we'll be putting that in and, uh, putting that into a, a public forum. Um, I know that information is already going to MLAs in the course of business plans, but, uh, that, that, yeah, happy to hear the support to get it out publicly, as I say. So, um, I, I think I've caught, uh, everything that was said there and, but I know there's a follow-up if I missed anything. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Any further questions, Emily O'Reilly?
Oh, thanks.
Emily Semler?
Yes, sorry, can you hear me? I'm on the phone, my internet is out again.
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Okay, um, so, uh, just under goal to indigenous leadership, and I know I asked about, um, succession planning, so the action 2.4 and 2.5, one of the concerns that I have is that right now, you know, we have, um, people within the government who, like I said, like my colleague has said, that training and other opportunities get, get...
Emily Semler, you, uh, cut out. Can you hear me? Uh, Emily Semler, I'll, uh, put you back on the list and try to sort out any technical difficulties in the interim. Are there any other further questions from members?
Yeah.
Uh, Emily Semler, if you could just mute yours or we, or if our staff could do that, and I'll go to you, Emily Marcellus.
Okay, so this will... Will this, um, also, the training and stuff also be tied to, so that there's bonus on the managers that are giving out and approving training that, you know, that they're looking at all staff before just choosing one or not being given, uh, open opportunity for all staff in the same area or within the government to have this opportunity to, to advance and to have training? Thank you.
Uh, Emily Semler, you, you, you cut out, uh, in and out there for, for the middle part of your question. So I'm just gonna, uh, we heard the beginning and the end, but maybe you can just in a more of a condensed format re-ask.
So, sorry, I'm going on my phone and then my truck started outside, so then my phone went to the truck. Technology is not working for me today. Um, so the goal in the actions, there are 2.4 and 2.5, um, and so we have, we've heard from numerous, uh, people throughout our time and probably even before we were elected that people get training. So what is going to keep the senior management and management so that way all staff have equal opportunity and are indigenous, especially when we have departments that are low in senior management and management, um, in leadership roles or any development, that it's given an opportunity so that they are able to not find out through the grapevine that their colleague has gotten it that just started six months ago? You know? Um, so is there going to be tying that to senior management bonuses and management bonuses to ensure that, you know, that those are increasing as well? The training opportunities for indigenous to move up? Thank you.
Thank you, Emily Semler. Minister?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I get a lot of the inquiries that come in, particularly from MLAs, but also from members of public service directly or members of the public who were at times unsuccessful or who had other experiences. And there is, I realize there will, there will always be times where one person gets a thing and another person doesn't get a thing and there's a sense that there's been some unfairness. Sometimes it's not unfairness, sometimes one person doesn't have the whole information. Other times, there's things we need to do better. So, you know, I, I want to start with that because I think it's okay to acknowledge that sometimes do things do not go as properly that they should. They didn't follow the process. There was someone that got picked at, you know, when somebody else could have also gotten picked. I, I want to acknowledge that that is a reality and that that's a human nature element to some degree, but the more we can put in a process and a vision, well, vision firstly, and then the process by which to achieve the better vision, the better chance that we're going to start to, to, to drive fairness and transparency through process rather than, than the ad hoc that, that I think I'm hearing Emily Semler quite rightly, you know, say is, is not appropriate. Sorry. Um, so there are, and, and this is one of the things that's, I, I think, quite different about having an action plan and having a framework, is that now there are indeed going to be annual performance expectations for leaders to be accountable to address unconscious bias, racism, discrimination and harassment. But also then there's the, there's the requirement, and again, also tied to senior management evaluation of them achieving these targets. So if they're not using the tools at their disposal to succession plan, have training plans and to make use of various different training, uh, opportunities available to achieve the goals of succession planning and et cetera, well, then they are going to be held accountable. Right? So, um, I, I hope that starts to, to get at the, to get at the, the root of that sense, that sense of unfairness, um, because that's not, that's not helping anybody. It's not helping the public service, it's not helping the management, it's not helping anyone. So, um, yeah, I, I, I do think this plan does start to get at some of that by, again, tying that performance to the senior managements, but also by putting in place, you know, things like, you know, again, just putting all of it into place where we now have some tools at our disposal and where everyone gets to see what, what's supposed to be going on. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Minister. Any follow-up, Emily Semler?
No, I just, yeah, and I, and I, yeah, I agree with the, uh, Minister that, you know, on, on some occasions that there are, but we do hear a lot of the time and I don't think a lot of times it's brought forward to my, like, past me, like, I, I hear from, uh, public servants that, that come and vent their frustrations, but, um, they don't feel safe enough that in their position or they may be penalized if, if, if it's formally brought to the attention of the Minister and that's our route to go through. So I just wanted to make sure it's brought up in this context that we are doing things so that way our managers and our senior managers that are, they, they have a standard that they need to follow and that we as govern, as, you know, government can say, yes, we did this by the book. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily Semler. Any, uh, comment or response to that, Minister?
Uh, Mr. Chair, you know, I, I actually would suggest I'd like to turn it to Deputy Minister because it's not just about sort of the, the government vision that I might speak to, but it's the operations that, that, that really when Emily Semler's speaking to, it's the operational element of how we make it so. So if I could turn it to Deputy Minister for his comments, please.
Go ahead, Deputy Minister.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Minister. I, I would just, uh, add a bit to what the process, uh, we envision the process going forward in terms of, uh, in terms of giving indigenous employees at the GNWT the tools to move ahead. So as the Minister mentioned, it'll be part of, uh, performance management of, uh, senior managers, they'll be, have a discussion with their managers about how they intend to meet their targets and specific examples of who they will give training to or encourage people to take training in order to move up into those senior ranks so that they can meet those targets. So it's a granular exercise, but it's, uh, something that will be going on in hundreds of different conversations across the GNWT to ensure that all of the senior managers have that on their radar, that they will because they have those targets. Um, and then I would just also add that in terms of access to, uh, training, we do have the Equitable Work Training Policy, which is in place and we have to share that with the committee. Um, and we also have a succession policy for indigenous employees, which, uh, which we can also share with the committee. So those tools as well are available to managers and to employees to give them the, uh, the guidance that the GNWT has issued on these topics. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McKay. Uh, Emily Marcellus, did you have any further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the one area that has to be looked at are, there's two areas that I, I am aware of, uh, from an outsider point of view because I've never been in the public service for many, many years. Uh, one of the things is, um, when a, when, uh, an indigenous employee comes to, um, ask a question about treatment and, uh, how things are going at their, um, at their workplace when there's a problem, uh, they, you know, um, a lot of managers say, oh, you got to appeal to the union. Well, the union, by the time the union gets involved and by the time, uh, by then, uh, the employee, if they, if the manager doesn't, uh, um, has a, hasn't a reason to, uh, uh, discipline them or get rid of them altogether, uh, there's, uh, there's no recourse. And, um, uh, I just think that, uh, a lot of times that, uh, uh, the union is not acting fast enough, yet there, these employees have paid union dues for sometimes like one employee, 22 years. And the union is not stepping up to the plate to actually defend the employee's, um, record and why this, why some of these things happen? Because, uh, you know, I've never been involved in the government of Northwest Territories employment area before for many years, heard a lot, but never really saw what happened. And now that I'm here, I find that there is no recourse. So, you know, some of the questions that Mr. O'Reilly asked and some of the other ones about the appeal process, I don't know if that appeal process of, um, how indigenous employees are treated in the workplace is actually addressed. Um, I wonder if someone, if the Minister will be able to comment on that. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Emily Marcellus. Minister?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, uh, Mr. Chair, I mean firstly, so staffing appeals are entirely a GNWT process, um, but with respect to other issues that may arise for a unionized employee, um, the, the union is by virtue of the operation of, of the Collective Agreement Public Service Act, the union is, is the representative, they are, they are the, the entity that comes forward night. Um, so to the extent that there's concerns about, about their role, their involvement, um, you know, uh, the union has a role to play in terms of achieving the goals of representative public service and a public service that is, you know, culturally aware, sensitive and law and alive to the realities of, of the North, of reconciliation, of the values we all want to hold. So I think all, I, I can't speak for the union, but I, what I, what I suggest is if, if committee hasn't had the opportunity is that I, I, I believe that the union shares those values and that they may well be very happy to present to committee as well and, and could then speak to, to some of those, uh, answers that Emily Marcellus is looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. Uh, any follow-up, Emily Marcellus?
No, Mr. Chair. That's good. Thanks.
Any further questions from committee members? Seeing and hearing none. Uh, Minister Woznick and staff would like to thank you very much for coming to present today to committee and, uh, thank you for your work on the action plan. I'm sure committee will have some detailed feedback in, uh, writing and look forward to a continued conversation in this area.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair, and thanks very much to the committee. Uh, I know myself, Minister, Deputy Minister McKay and, uh, Krista are all, we're all committed to this and I, it helps every time that we get the chance to speak about it and to answer questions, but also to be asked questions, even if we don't have the answers. So, um, I appreciate it that your interest in this and I appreciate the, the fact that we continue to have this dialogue. So thanks very much. Have a good.
Thank you. We will now end the public portion of this broadcast. Thank you to everyone who joined us today. Thank you. We will now end the public portion of this broadcast. Thank you to everyone who joined us today.